All right, we are live. Looks like we have folks starting to join us. So hello, everyone. Please hang tight while we give a little time to let people come virtually through our door. It takes us just a few seconds to get everybody into the room, so we'll get started in just a moment. All right, it looks like it's slowing down a little bit, Commissioner, so why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Michelle. Good afternoon, everyone. So great to be here today. Very grateful for you joining us today for this community conversation with the wonderful Mayor of Estes Park Wendy Koenig. I appreciate her being here so much. We had a great time just about a week and a half ago, Wendy, that we were flipping pancakes at the Laramie County Fair Pancake Breakfast and was such a lot of fun to see you in person. And very grateful for our partnership working going forward with Estes Park. We have a lot going on in Estes Park. But first, let me thank staff for being here today. Wanted just grateful for Michelle Byrd, our Director of Public Information, right? Public Information Director, I think I have that right this time.
But public information is the same thing.
Okay, and then we have also our new, someone new to our office, Austin Harville, who is going to help me with community outreach and things like that. Austin, would you like to introduce yourself real quick?
Sure, thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, my name's Austin. I'm the new Community Resource or Community Information Resource Technician. I'll be just basically helping Michelle moving forward. I'll be hosting some of these as we as we go along. So I'll be sitting in her seat to help the Commissioner and any guests facilitate these meetings.
Great, thank you. So I will just go ahead and introduce Wendy about her, give some updates. I'll give some updates. And then we just thought we opened it up for questions from the audience. You know, I have our Estes Valley Advisory Planning Advisory Board meeting today as well, so I welcome you all to join that. And but right now, we just thought we'd keep it as kind of casual today and let you let us give some updates and then take questions from the audience or Wendy and I are, we have lots to talk about. So Wendy, would you mind just giving an update and sharing about the great things happening in Estes Park?
I'll be happy to, and thanks for continuing this joint venture to reach out. I think it's important to give several platforms for people to listen and give comments. So this is very nice of you, and I am enjoying the relationship with the Commissioner Board that's in place now. Everybody's very enthusiastic about helping all of the communities around, and I want to compliment all of you for the work that you're doing. You certainly are busy people. So thank you very much for caring so much about our individual communities like you do. I think that the two things that people are very interested in is how is that complex act plan group, the advisory group, doing with all of the information coming from both the town side as well as the county side? And I'm very pleased that the group is organized to take information from both sectors and work on a new comprehensive plan. And next meeting will be September on the 12th. That is going to include some of the town board so that we can get an update for what's going on. And I know that the meeting schedule is on the town website, so if individuals want to watch it, they certainly can. We also have a meeting on Tuesday night for the town board, and the board is looking at the vacation rental situation and the fact that right now, up until the people up to 2016 are able to transfer their license if they sell their property, the other, the person that buys it can come in and and have a vacation rental license. That's already made for them, and we have a waiting list of about 20 people, 20 to 40 people at any point in time wanting to do vacation rentals for short-term rentals. And we do have 322 of them within the town limits of Estes Park. Originally, this was done as a group effort with the Laramie County Commissioners. And so the number is, I understand, Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, that number is capped for you all, just like it is for the Estes Park. But one of the concerns is is that they are running a business and not not paying commercial taxes. That's a concern. And the transferability of the license previous to 2016 is another concern. So we're looking at different methods to possibly help with the workforce housing shortage by working with some of the short-term rental groups. We also have affordable housing agency run by Naomi Hoff, and we just opened Peak View Housing 20-plus units. I think you were there for that that opening, Commissioner McNally, and it's a unique situation because there's no income limitation on those particular units. All of the units previous to that have been for different economic levels. So we're trying to get a mixture in our valley to provide professional as well as service industry housing. We have Fish Hatchery has just been bid and accepted. It's the town-owned property, so we will be seeing more workforce housing out on the that end of town out by Fall River. And I'm hoping that the units will go up quickly and that it will provide another over 100 units for workforce housing. We're hoping to get the Fall River Trail completed, the extension, but it didn't get put on on the sustainability bill, and it was kicked off. But if we have people living out there, it would be nice to have that trail completed so they can hop on their bikes and come to town if they want to. So or just take a nice walk in the evening. So we're working on on that, and Congressman DeGuss was in Estes Park and had a roundtable with different members of staff to see what our needs are for grants and proposals. So we appreciate that. It's really interesting being mayor because there's so many different levels of government, and you kind of think you're just going to sit in your little piece of the world and work with only town government. But it really involves working with the Commissioners and working with the Congressmen and the Senators for the betterment of our community. And I think we're fortunate. We have people that really want to do their jobs well and and help all of our community. So that's really my update. I hope that if anyone has questions, they certainly can ask.
Thanks, Wendy. That's great that Congressman DeGuss was up there. I think I saw him before he headed up or the same day, but he was in Loveland, and we were at the Community House Center. So he gets around and grateful that he was up there talking with you all and your staff about, you know, grants and things they can get going. So that's wonderful to hear. And I think the short-term rental discussion, I'm glad you brought that up because we're having that as well at the county level. And it's actually several counties have brought that up, and it might be a topic at the state legislature next year, just for everyone's radar. I'm not sure where it's going, but we have the same conversations about that they're small businesses and not being taxed at that rate, and what does that mean? And since they are dragging resources from the community, should they be paying in to, you know, those resources? But so that's a good conversation to have. Maybe we should have that as a topic facilitated in the future because I think we'll have to prepare for that one. So well, I again, I agree with you. I love this relationship that we have started and the conversations that we're having and partnerships that we're building. I do know we're coming up in October, I believe, as a board, an entire board meeting with the in the town board and visit Estes Park. We're going to have that meeting, I believe, in October. And I look forward to that. I was just up last weekend before I moved my daughter into college. I went up and had dinner and we hiked and went up closer to the Burn Star Marine Park. And it was great to be in Estes. It was so much cooler than down in Loveland, and I was grateful for that. And so just so folks know, I'm up there a lot. I've been up in the retreat a lot this last week and a half, two weeks, and Black Hollow. So everyone gets kind of, it gets confusing. There's the Black Hollow debris flow tragedy and incident in the Pooter Canyon, which we're still having conversations and and just working on. We have almost fully, not fully, but done a lot of debris removal and recovery in that area. And then we have the Black Creek flooding when the retreat near Glen Haven, which we are still having issues with. I want to say I've been up there, walked quite a few areas of that to look at the the continued erosion and damage from the flooding in that area. The county's been up there a lot, talking with residents, connecting them with resources. And also, we're touring that area with the National, okay, I always get this, it's National Conservate, is it National Resources Conservation Service? NCRS. Yes. So I always get those, C and R mixed up. And so they were up with the county, looking at some of these sites, including the streams and the flow, looking at where that goes and how that looks and seeing what what they can do and what might qualify. And so we are working very closely. I know county staff has been up there trying to do what they can to help keep the road accessible. But we get into that point where there's county maintained roads, but then there's private roads, which we, as a county, cannot do anything about. Those are private property roads that we can't help with. But we are bringing resources to those residents that can help them with the issues like those that they're dealing with. So just want to say there's a lot of effort going for that. We're also still looking at the Emergency Watershed Protection Grants, so what we can do further, and they've been supportive to us by helping cover some of the reimbursement costs that we have for those grants and trying to help us get more funding to dealing with that. If you probably saw the aerial mulching that Congressman DeGuss was advertising today on social media that's happening up the Pooter Canyon. It's very expensive. The city Greeley is taking a lot of that cost on. I know they kind of ran out of that grant funding last week, and so they're looking to do more. And I don't know how much of that's coming over into the closer to the Glen Haven Estes side of the Burn Star. And we have heard some anecdotal data that this is maybe helping, but we don't have the research to see how much this is helping, but we're trying to do what we can to mitigate the impacts of the flooding and the flash flooding due to the burn scar. So just want to kind of give everyone an update on that, that we're, those efforts are still continuing, and we have a lot going on there. And you can always go to the website where the Camer Peak Burn Area, where they have updates and weekly newsletters that go out to the residents impacted from there. So if you're curious about that or have, maybe you haven't signed up for that or don't know about that information, I encourage you to kind of get signed up for the weekly emails that I receive and then also go on the website for updates. And if you haven't signed up for that texting service, I think it's 888-777, for getting text for alerts for flooding. I think you put in 2021 floods or there's certain keywords. Michelle, I don't know which ones are current. I think it's
I'm blanking on it right now, but I'll double-check them and I'll put them in the chat box.
Great, thanks. But I get those, and you get some, it's like if you're up there hiking or something, you might want to have those alerts that let you know that there might be a flash flood or when to evacuate and kind of gives you that that update. So wanted everyone to know about that. Also, I've been up to Estes Park talking with folks about land use and things that are happening, and I appreciate the engagement. And I encourage everyone to continue to contact me and ask questions. You know, we want to hear it all, whether it's criticism, comments, compliments, bring it on. I want to hear all about it because if I don't hear about it, I don't know the issues that we need to talk about or maybe resolve. So I welcome all feedback at all times. And trust me, the last few days with the mask mandates and things happening in the Thompson School District in Loveland, I have heard from both sides of the fence, and I've been listening, and there's been a lot of feedback. And so I want to encourage everyone that I try to listen and but I want to make sure Wendy knows that it really is the purview under the Public Health Director to make those decisions. And tonight is a Board of Health meeting online. You can watch online and listen to the updates and the information. They will be having the discussion about the changing condition, conditions inside Laramie County. I wanted to say publicly that I support the Estes Park School District and the measures that they have voted on and taken. I want to publicly state that I strongly support the school district and the measures and actions that they're taking for this school year for their staff and students. And I wanted to just let them know that I am supportive of them in that school district. And so I wanted to get that out there as well. Next week, August 24th, I will be having a conversation in the DeHosa Valley, which is, if you don't know, that is up the Highway 7, past Lily Lake into that area, which is, they consider themselves kind of a different area than the Estes Valley, but there's, I figure they're still kind of connected. And we'll be having a community conversation continued from the last one we had regarding land use and bringing some agents and some folks to bring more information, talking about land conservation and other areas of interest to that area. I don't know if everyone knows about the new tax opportunity that was passed in the state legislature that if you want to do conservation easements and that kind of information, there is now up to 90%, 90% of the value tax credit that you are able eligible for for doing that kind of option. And so we'll be bringing folks to talk about that. We also bring some maps showing the different zoning and areas and conservation easements that already exist in that area and bring up maybe some other, well, Department of National Resources, the Planning Department, and we'll have a lot of staff up there to answer those questions for those individuals. I think it starts at 5:30, and we go till 7:00, 7:30, and it's at the High Peak Camp, which I believe is also, some folks know it as the Salvation Army Camp. And so I welcome everyone to come, and there's always good information and things to learn from for everybody. The other update that we had, we did have a very successful fair and rodeo this past few weeks. I was very grateful. We had 18 elected officials come to the pancake breakfast. We had a lot of fun connecting and getting to to know each other. And outside, we had folks serving pancakes and ham and and Wendy and I were filling up people's coffee and warming them up. And so we're very grateful for for those folks that came out to participate and thankful to all the volunteers, the ranch hands, and all the folks that serve on the fair board and the rodeo board and their volunteer involvement because it is, it takes a lot to put that on. We actually had the top two cowboys in the entire country participate in the rodeo, and they're called Million Dollar Cowboys. If you'd like to learn more about them, I guess they were featured on 16 Minutes the week before they came to Laramie County. So very proud of that and grateful for all the volunteer work and folks that put into that. As Wendy mentioned, we are continuing along with our Estes Valley Planning Advisory, you know, planning, comprehensive planning and kind of tandem and parallel with the town of Estes. And I'm very grateful for those partnerships and the information that we're sharing and working on together. And I'm hoping we can still go forward, and and I think we will go forward and and take this, and maybe even at the end, we'll see. Maybe there will be a new IGA, and I'm hoping that we can find these ways that we can connect and work with partnerships. So we're working on all of those things. There's lots to talk about, and so happening around the whole county, but let's just turn it over to everybody and let you ask questions. And if not, Wendy and I'll find other things to to bring up.
Thanks, Commissioners. First, I just wanted to let folks know they can first ask questions. Folks are already asking questions in the Q and A box, so thank you for doing that. There is one question that Mayor Koenig actually responded to regarding what can an individual do to encourage more recycling? And she responded that there is a meeting of the Recycling Committee this Friday. So I just wanted to make sure in case there might be others interested in that, that they were able to hear that. I'm also, and I see Michael has his hand raised, so I wanted to let everybody else know too. If you want to chat with us, you can raise your hand, and I will bring you on with us, and we can chat a little bit. So those are kind of the two ways you can interact with us today. So, Michael, I am going to bring you on with us, and now you just need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted. Is that correct?
You are correct. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I have a question both for the Commissioner and the Mayor. And and that is, do you envision one comp plan or two?
Okay, well, Michael, take a stab at that. At this point in time, that's up to the Comp Plan Committee to bring something to the town board of Estes Park. I I'm open to either way that the citizens want to have this done.
Hi, Michael. Thanks for being here, and I'm glad for that question. You know, I think that I'm open to all options, and I'm hoping that as we progress forward with input from all the community, whether they're in the Estes Valley or in the town, that we find ways to work together and have these common goals and work on what we think it might be the best way to go forward. But right now, we have two processes and two plans, and what we'll have at the end, I'm not sure. But I do know there are lots of areas around the fringes that where, you know, there there's that area between one side of the street is county, one side of the street is is town, and I'm sure that we'll find ways to make sure that those areas are addressed. I I feel that we have a lot of conversations going forward, and I want to listen to what the residents of both areas, which I think is overall the whole county, you know, they're part of the county everywhere, somewhere in Laramie County. And so I want to make sure I'm listening to the residents and making sure I'm hearing how they feel about it, what they'd like to see. And then also, you know, I'm also listening to staff to see how they feel that things can go forward as well because, you know, the staff interact at a staff level. But overall, I'd just like to, you know, be open-minded to the process and see what what develops. Does that help, Michael?
I'd like to make a comment, and that is that I believe the Estes Valley truly is one community, but we we have two segments that appear to have some different objectives. And if we have one plan, I think that's good, but I think it needs to recognize the specific desires of the town and the different and specific desires of the county.
I think that's a a good comment, Michael. And and if I'm not mistaken, you serve on that committee, correct?
Yes.
So I I know you'd like to have, you know, that type of direction, but the way the committee was set up was so it could be open-ended, and you all could discuss and listen to input from the community. So that's why I'm I'm very neutral, because otherwise the town board could just sit and do their own comp plan, and that's not what we want to have happen. So I would make sure that your comment is shared with the committee so that they can sit and discuss it and also ask that question of the citizens and the different groups that you're bringing in for the meetings.
I plan to do that.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Thanks, Michael. And I always say, you know, you can always contact me if you want to have this further conversation. And but I do understand that, you know, there are certain areas of the Estes Valley, including the town, that are very special and unique and need, you know, specific kind of codes that address those special unique areas. So I'm I'm very sensitive to that and want to do what I can to protect those areas. So.
Lastly, I'd like to say I appreciate the fact that both you and the mayor are accessible.
Oh. Well, and I appreciate that you contacted us, so that's that's good, too. We can be accessible and have nobody talk to us. But I think that it's working out very well. And, Michael, I do appreciate you you being at so many different events, and your comments are always very good, and I appreciate listening to you. So thank you, Michael.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I can't say it better than that. Ditto.
All right, Michael, we're going to make you a regular, whether you like it or not. But thanks. Thanks for your comments, Michael. All right, so what I'm going to do now.
Michelle, I just could ask real quick, just commenting on the recycling. You know, we are currently having lots of conversations. It may not always look public, but we have these work sessions. You can click on it and see when we, they'll talk about the topics. We have had some solid waste discussions going forward. We have a solid waste policy council. We're looking at, you know, this tiered responses of the new landfill that we're preparing for and also what the new, the the current landfill, how that gets taking care of closed down and these new sites and what we're going to be doing. And we have to, we're, as a new board and Commissioners, we're coming through and really looking, taking a deep dive and looking at all these options and making sure that what we're doing is sustainable. And of course, we all support recycling and want to make sure that we do as much diversion from the landfill as possible. And we're doing some pretty innovative and exciting talks, and I'm looking forward to having those talks more as we go forward. And, you know, I just know that's something that we're continuing to work on. And we, I really want to thank Jeremy, who's running the current landfill. I think he's doing a great job, and he's got this technology with these drones that he does every night that I find fascinating. And he's been able to extend the life of that landfill, but making sure that we're compacting and using that space wisely. And and it's saving the county money and the taxpayers' money as well as helping us maximize the lifespan of that landfill. And also, they're re, you know, doing that battery and diversion program and education program using kids as well. And if you're not aware of that, how you take care of batteries, so we don't have those battery fires at the landfill or inside garbage trucks, if you've seen those online. I really encourage you to go to the website. They have been doing some great engagement of children and helping them design some of those campaigns. So it's very exciting, and I'm glad we're kind of doing that education and outreach as well. So I hope that helps, Nancy. Thank you for your your question.
And and Nancy, I think one thing she was asking about was composting in Estes Park. And so that's been brought up in the past, and we'll be discussing that on Friday a little bit more. I'll ask her question on Friday. It's a little bit tricky because of our bears and because we don't have the environment that breaks things down very quickly. And we need to have things actually go through the garb. This was interesting. I went to this sewage department, and they took me on a tour, and they said one of the problems they have is if everybody composts, they don't have the organic material from food being ground up in your garbage disposal going through to feed the little microbes that they have. So perhaps there needs to be a little bit of moderation, and everyone take one time a day that we send something through our garbage disposal so that we keep the sewer department and the little microbes healthy. So that that was something new that I didn't know, and it was kind of fascinating to me. So we will be discussing the composting, and so that the citizens know I'm actually on the policy board for the Laramie County landfill. So been doing that for quite a few years. Took a little break when I went off as as trustee and pulled right back in. So it's, you know, it's amazing that I could get so excited about talking about landfills and garbage, actually. It's pretty good. I'm very important.
Yes, it is. And thanks for your service on that. I think you guys are starting back up in in person or your meetings in September. And it's it's been fascinating to me, the amount of questions and interest in that. And I think it's awesome because it is important, and sometimes people don't realize how important our landfill and how we take care of those things are important for the whole county. And you're right, Wendy, all these little things we're learning about that that we didn't realize are so important. We're just grateful for the staff that have that expertise and knowledge that they're doing their jobs well, and and I appreciate them all. So it's great. I'd love to, I still want to come up and tour your new water plant, too. So we gotta do that sometime.
Okay, well, we'll go, we'll go through together. Sounds good.
Um, and I joke, I don't joke, this is true. A lot of times during our community surveys, and we ask residents what they think the number one service we provide, like what is the most important service we provide? And very often, our landfill and solid waste services are either number one or number two. It kind of battles it out with our parks and open spaces. So I always think that's funny. But once people start to get into the science and and everything that goes around landfills, we do offer a Laramie County 101 class where folks get the opportunity to head out to our landfill. And people always say it's their favorite day of the whole class. So it is, it is an exciting topic for a lot of people, and you wouldn't typically think that way. And yeah, forgive me, I was looking for the links for the battery, and so you guys know I can only do one thing at one time. You did answer Nancy's question about how she can find out about the meeting, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure before I marked it off.
The meeting is a staff meeting, and it is a a public, public, that we will report on it. So.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that we got her question answered before we moved along. Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that we got her question answered before we moved along.
Okay.
Not having, I don't have any open questions right now and we don't have any hands raised. We can sit and look at each other awkwardly or if you guys want the update on other things, I know you can always continue talking about the things you love.
Well, I have some updates. They're kind of somber updates, but it was a year ago on August 13th that we had the Cameron Peak fire start. And you know, you look back at all the partnerships and all the things that we're doing and there's some things to celebrate and to learn from. And I just want everyone to know how much I appreciate the continued efforts from our volunteer firefighters who are still out there in the Glen Haven, some of those areas doing a lot of restoration work. Our nonprofits like the Big Thompson Watershed Coalition, the Pooter Watershed Coalition. Are you, are partners with the state and municipalities and the US Forest Service that are continuing as we're working together to recover and also, you know, help mitigate future impacts. So I just want to kind of make everyone kind of remember what we were going through a year ago and thank goodness Estes Park. What a great job evacuating the town. Thank you, Mayor. And then just glad that the town is, is whole and another somber remembrance is this Friday is the one year anniversary that we lost Department of Natural Resources Ranger Brendan Unit, who drowned in horse tooth and will be having remembrance ceremony at horse tooth in a boat procession on Friday. I'll be participating in that. And then in October, I'll be traveling to DC with a couple of representatives from the Department of Natural Resources. And he will be placed on the National Memorial of Fallen Peace Officers and I'll be tending with, to represent the county board of county commissioners along with the Department of Natural Resources. So I just want to kind of let you know about that as well. So.
And I, I can do just a brief update on COVID. I went to the, I did the Zoom meeting from Laramie County with Tom Gonzalez and he had Kevin Unger, who is the CEO of UC Health of Northern Colorado and Margot Carston with Banner Health of Colorado. And she also covers, I think she said four or six different states. So she's a busy lady. And it's really interesting that they meet now daily. They have an incident command format because of the count that we have, but what's happening today is different than what was happening 18 months ago. And the 40 to 60 year olds basically are spending seven to 13 days, you know, within, within the hospital system. Ninety-three percent of the people that go into ICU that are very ill are unvaccinated. So they're wanting to encourage people to please get vaccinated. And I was fascinated that the the dedication of Tom from Laramie County Health and the whole group is they will, if you have a group of people that want to be vaccinated, they will actually come and bring, bring things to you if you have enough people. So that can be organized through Laramie County. And the pediatric population is being, numbers are going up and that's because vaccinated as well as unvaccinated people can carry that over to the kids. And so right now, they're just encouraging people to wear masks indoors. And I was interested, I didn't realize that the Delta variant is as contagious as chickenpox used to be. And so it, it is something that's very easily transmitted. And by whether you're vaccinated or you're, you're unvaccinated, there's a good chance that you can be a carrier. So I think it's, it'll be interesting to see what happens over the next few weeks with Laramie County and the things that they're trying, trying to do for all of us. And in Laramie County, 58% of our population is vaccinated. So that's a good thing. They've decided we don't quite have herd immunity because the count's going up within the hospitals. And we need to give our thanks to all of the caseworkers and health providers within the hospital system. They're getting tired. And one of the administrators are having is workers now, if they're close to retirement, they're retiring because they're tired. And then the traveling nurses and, and staff make a lot more money than just being on regular staff at the hospitals. So quite a few of the workers are changing their status and becoming traveling caregivers. And so that means that the cost for care for individuals in the hospital is higher because it's the traveling workers. So I found, you know, that very interesting and that the vaccinated individuals that do get the Delta variant rarely end up in the ICU unit. They're, they have a shorter stay at the hospital because they do have some immunity. And they're going to be requesting people, particularly with Moderna and Pfizer, if you have autoimmune compromise system or you're taking prednisone or other corticosteroids, they're wanting people to and then for the people that have been vaccinated.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think your mic's going in and out a little bit when you, when you lean back or.
Okay, I'll stay leaning forward. Thank you. I appreciate that. So with, with individuals they, they're thinking with Moderna and Pfizer that within eight months, you need to get a booster. So we'll see what happens with all of that. So I know it's a hot topic in some communities and in others, it's not so hot, but I, I'm more concerned. I'm a grandma. I have nine grandchildren and I do care for my three-year-old grandchild sometimes. And so I want to be sure that I don't accidentally carry something, a little vax, and it would be just very sad and heartbreaking. So but that's the update on that that I have.
Yeah.
So I think it was correct.
Yeah, you're right. So I, we get, as a board of county commissioners.
I can't hear you, Jody.
Oh, how about now?
I can hear you, Jody.
Okay, so I, we get kind of right now daily updates from the Board of Health and the Health Director. And there is a Board of Health meeting tonight and they'll be having this as a discussion. If, if some of you don't know, my husband, well, my husband and my, some members of my family work in the ERs and ICUs. So I, we're back to not, you know, living on the same parts of the house again, just to try to you know, protect each other. And also, you know, we, we do know since a lot of them were first, when the first few vaccinated that we're worried about, you know, the getting the boosters, which I think they'll be getting soon. So and then we, we, I do have, you know, monitoring kind of the changes. So we're, we're really trying to get out, you know, following the data, following the CDC, so following the State Health Department guidelines and having that discussion. I do know that yesterday, the Health Department went out to some marginalized communities and reached out to folks that maybe don't have access to getting to vaccine clinics. And 76 at one location were administered and 55 at another location. And so out of those, what is it? 11, 131 folks that were vaccinated yesterday, 113 of those were first doses. So we're still continuing our vaccine efforts and trying to reach folks who maybe haven't had that opportunity and trying to make sure folks understand the importance of being vaccinated. As you know, the numbers show that most of those folks that are in the hospitals that are getting so sick in the ICUs are pretty much the extreme high percentage are unvaccinated. And we're seeing, you know, these impact younger folks pretty, pretty severely. This variant is such a high viral load as, as Mayor Wendy was talking about, it's such a high viral load with this variant that it is very contagious. So I am personally wearing masks when I, we're in meetings. If you watch our meetings, we're wearing masks and wearing them inside at events and doing my part to model and try to be careful. And so I encourage everyone to, to mask up and, and to follow those guidelines and be extra careful. So we're doing everything we can to educate and follow the science and data. And again, tonight, I think that we're having a very robust and engaged conversation regarding the COVID conditions and, and discussion about going forward. And we're looking at those numbers. And if you're watching conditions across the country, there were some states that are making some big changes and decisions today. So just keep up to date. I know the Health Department are working very hard and tirelessly. And again, I just want to state my public supporter, the Public Health Director, because I know he's, he's working very hard and watching things very closely and trying to do the best he can with the science and the data that he has. And he's working closely and has, I think, almost daily calls now with the, with the hospitals and things and keeping him fingers on what's happening. So everyone's all hands on deck. And again, go to the, the website, the COVID dashboard and all that information there is very helpful. And I think they have a chat and they're always welcome for you to call and ask them questions. The team there are phenomenally responsive and very helpful. And I encourage you to, if you have questions, to contact them about what's the latest, what else we can do. And also I think they're great at helping you find resources in your community if you need some resources for that. So.
Right.
What is that?
Jody, we have a question from David Converse about, as far as Estes Park, what are we doing to try to keep people safe? And right now, we're attending the, the meetings and within the town hall, we have a mask mandate if you're in a meeting or walking up and down the hallways. I put my mask on when I'm not sitting by myself in my office. And yesterday, we discussed the fact that, yeah, you have yours, too. We discussed the fact that when the new town board wanted a mandate within the community for indoor and outdoor. And what we found is we don't have enough police officers and the staff to enforce that regulation. So it doesn't make sense to make regulations we can't enforce. And we tend to follow Laramie County regulations. And right now, Laramie County is encouraging mask use at all indoor venues. So that's what the town board is doing. And realizing that we need the support of Laramie County to be able to enforce a mandate if, if it becomes, comes from Laramie County. So I expecting to see things change over the next few weeks. But that's why you're seeing us not jump on it and say, everybody has to wear them. And it's, it's a regulation in Estes Park because we can't enforce it with the number of people that are in Estes Park at this point in time. So we're encouraging businesses to, on their own, to have the signs up, please wear a mask in our establishment. And if, when you go around in Estes Park, a lot of the employees and people are wearing masks. Safeway, I was in the other day, about 75% of the people were wearing masks. So one thing you all can do for yourselves is put the mask on when you're out and about going in and out of businesses. And that's where we are right now. So hope that answers your question, David.
And as a county, I know a lot of folks are relying on the county to come out and get guidance. And I think Tom's trying to do the best he can. That's why I appreciate the mayor attending the Zoom call yesterday for the updates. And I know they're going to probably go back to doing those weekly, I think, for a little while or, and so you know, again, I encourage everyone to listen to the Board of Health meeting tonight. There should be some good updates. I'm finding that I'm carrying a few extra masks in my purse because I've been going into venues and people say, oh, I forgot my mask. I don't have one. And I just give them one of my paper K, K95s. And so I think people got a little out of practice and, you know, are kind of trying to do the best they can. So I see David has his hand up if he wanted to continue that conversation, it looks like.
Absolutely. And I know the mayor said she was going to have to jump off a little bit early. So I, if that time is now, Mayor, if you want to say goodbye.
Let me see what David wants to say and then I'll, I'll pick up.
All right, David, you just need to unmute yourself. You should see a mute button. All right, good to go.
Thank you very much for answering my question. I'm disappointed in the increase in rates. As I put in the question from your Laramie County COVID dashboard, last week was a very bad week for Estes Park.
It was.
Particularly, 45 people got ill. And that's worse than almost any time throughout the pandemic. And my experience in walking in downtown Estes Park through the post office and other places is that very, very few masks are visible. And so we've actually made a decision to shop elsewhere at this point in time and to go more back to the pickup packages. We would like to shop locally, but that doesn't seem to be with the number of visitors to be working very well for our, in our favor. So I just wanted to pass on, that's how, how it comes across to us. And obviously, everybody can make their own decision and we've done that. And I appreciate all the help and the problems you have in managing this. It's an extremely hard problem. But it is also very difficult to get tested in the area in Laramie County. For COVID, if you, for example, are worried that maybe you're carrying it first, carrying it and not aware of it, and you're going to visit elderly people. You have, we had to drive to Denver recently to get that done. So I just pointed out, that would be a nice feature to, to bring back the rapid testing and ease of testing. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And that's, that's something that actually one of our trustees found. She was with someone that tested positive and he's actually in the ICU and she had to travel to the valley to get tested because she was asymptomatic to be sure that she wasn't a carrier. So that's something that I'm willing to call and talk to the hospital about to see if, if we can improve the ability of tests. It's a good, good point to make. Thank you, David. And thank you, Jody and, and Michelle and I'm going to leave to get to my next meeting. And thanks for having me today.
Thanks, Mayor. See you soon.
Okay. Bye bye.
So, and David, I'd just like to add to that. I'm glad that you bring up that. I will ask that question. I actually got that feedback last night, too, at an event I went to where everyone was wearing a mask inside, including all the college students. And it was great to see everyone was pretty much no problem with doing that and perfectly fine with being safe. But they were talking about, they were trying to do some travel and to get to the college and to get back and how, you know, the testing has gotten very expensive. They were having to pay for their tests. And also just trying, you know, having a hard time, you know, finding appointments. So I will bring that up as I heard some concerns about that and see, you know, where, where those clinics are or where, you know, accessibility, maybe we need to put those up on the website to make sure folks know of the different options. So but that, that's great feedback, David. I'm glad you brought that up. Well, great.
I don't have any other questions open and I don't see any hands raised. So we have about 12 minutes left.
Great. Well, one thing I'd like to talk about is I need a kind of a hands up or some input on whether or not we go in person. Again, I did this one virtually mostly because of the concerns of COVID. And I wanted to have folks feel safe to attend so we can have these conversations and listen. So I'd like, you know, it's still kind of nice to be outside. And we could do something outside instead of inside. But I didn't, that's the reason I chose not to have it inside at the rec center, but to do this virtually because of the concerns for the, the Delta variant. So I'd like to have just maybe everyone just kind of, did Michelle get a quick poll?
I am playing one off. I'm writing one up very quickly.
Helpful, right? I'm like, hey, I'm going to throw a curve ball here. And then also I'd like to just, I'd always like to bring something of interest for everyone. There's, there's an area that they want to talk about. So I want to make sure that there's not a special guest speaker that we could bring. Now, I do know the in-person talk for High Peak next week is in person, it's a very large room and we'll try to get those chairs a little socially distanced a little bit more, but we're going to, I am going to request people wear masks inside that building. But it's a very big, open area and I just want to make sure we follow up with that meeting before it gets kind of snowy up there. And I know we're expecting some snow here soon. So first, let's have a little quick poll. Do people want to do this virtually or do you want to? You know?
I hope, I did launch the poll. If, oh, people are voting. That always makes me feel better when I see people voting. It tells me you actually can see. So it looks like we have, everyone has answered. So let me end it and then I will share the results for everybody. So Commissioner, it looked about three, it was close to 50/50 is five people we're going to get. So we had three with 60, 60%, and then two with the 40% for the yes. So the no's were the winners.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and plan on doing this virtually. But I'm always open to coming, when I come up, you guys are always welcome to, to ask me to meet in person. So I'm up there a lot, as you know. So welcome that as, as much as possible. How about you put in the chat some topics you'd like to maybe discuss for next time if I should bring a special guest?
So and folks, you'll have to use the chat. You can't use the chat, everybody, but you can use the Q and A. So So you can throw them in the Q and A. It functions the same way as the chat. We'll be able to see it. We'll give you some time to think about it.
And uh, just want to give a heads up and I'm hoping um, I'm throwing another curve ball at staff. I'm sorry, guys. Um, but um, I think we're gonna do our community conversation. I just talked to the mayor on, as she texted me during this meeting of Loveland. That will be um, hopefully meeting at the Devil's Backbone that Labor Day weekend on Saturday. And a lot of folks are leaving town, some are not now. So we're gonna go ahead and meet at the shelter. Um, hoping we can do it a little earlier with the heat, um, maybe at eight-thirty. And um, meet and talk for the first half hour at the shelter and then do, hopefully, I haven't asked, I kind of mentioned this to the Department of Natural Resources, but I haven't formalized. Um, I do know they have some education tables, but maybe they wouldn't mind a ranger coming and doing a, a quick, small, short guided walk in that area. There's a, a walk to the north other side. We could walk the other path. It's not as crowded and there's lots of education pieces. But I will take the recommendations, but we'll talk about our open spaces and maybe get outside. So I know I've been wanting to do that anyway, so let's try it. So we'll be outside for that one. And I know parking is an issue, but hopefully people will carpool or come early, so. So they may put any comments in there?
We don't have any. Oh, here's one. Thank you, Nancy. Nancy says, I'd like to hear from businesses what they would need to recycle bottles, cans and paper at an increased rate. I understand it is expensive for them to recycle and there are other obstacles too. Um, and then the next one came from Kent, maybe Dwayne Penny um, to talk about the waste diversion in Estes right now.
Okay. Well, we'll reach out to Mr. Penny and um, and associate staff, see who would like to come. And we'll have a discussion on um, what is going on. So and get an update for that. So um, and then we'll just do our usual updates. And I'm sure the mayor is, she said she, maybe she could bring someone from the town of Estes staff. I'll, I'll mention that to her um, to kind of share what the town is doing as well. I mean, I know it's a shared thing, but maybe we should just have that conversation. So great. Well, um, I think we'll just honor everyone's time. I appreciate everyone being here today. And um, I think we had a great discussion. There's a lot of stuff happening. And I, again, as always, appreciate the mayor being involved and having these conversations with me and sharing this space. And we will continue these. We'll go ahead and do it in person. But like I said, I'm more than happy, uh, kind coffee or one of the parks we can meet outside and, and have a chat. So always feel free to reach out to me. And I want to thank Austin and Michelle for their support today and being here. And um, very, very excited about um, the things that we were planning and, and trying to do this continued community outreach. And grateful for everyone's participation. So thank you all. Stay safe, enjoy, get outside, enjoy the beautiful outdoors. It's great to, I can actually see the mountains today. It was awesome. So, yeah, so take care, everybody. And as always, um, I just love my job. Thanks for this opportunity to work hard on behalf and serve our great county of Laramo County. Thanks.
Bye.